Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the October 10th meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission. I will call us to order. And before we get into our agenda items, just want to go through a few housekeeping items. If you have a cellphone with you, please silence or turn it off. If you're here to speak on an item and you're not the applicant, if you could fill out one of these request forms, if you haven't done so already, and provide it to Elena or Jared down here in front. When that, when the item you signed up to speak on is called, and it's time for public comment, then you'll be called to the podium. Please come up, give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak. If you're here to speak on an item with a large group of people, we encourage you to elect a representative to share your group's concerns, and some additional time will be given to that person in that instance. Where several speakers are speaking on the same item, please do your best to limit comments to concerns that we haven't heard yet. Try to avoid, for the efficiency of the meeting, a lot of repetitive comments and discussions. And just please direct all your comments to the commission. If needed, we'll ask for staff or the applicant to respond when you're finished speaking. Finally, we appreciate the time that everyone's taken to come down here and be with us today. We just ask for your assistance in upholding the decorum of the meeting, and we ask that you don't speak from the, the audience, that you come to the podium. So, thank you for your attention and your assistance. And with that, we'll move to item two, which is the receipt of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to receive the minutes from September 26, 2024.
A motion to receive the minutes. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And those are received. Item three is continuance requests.
Uncontested requests, we have item 12, PUD 2033, requested deferred to October 24th. Item 13, SPUD 1671, also October 24th. Item 14, SPUD 1672, deferred to October 24th. Item 15, case SPUD 1682, deferred to October 24th. And item 16... My mic just go off?
No.
No, it's intermittent here. Item 16, SPUD 1666, deferred to December 12th.
So, we do have an item that is requested to be continued, but we have a number of neighbors here that would like to speak on it. And so, we're going to go ahead and hear from them. Pardon? Oh, 13, item 13. So, Shelby Lippert, if you could come up, provide your name and address, and you have up to five minutes, understanding that we will not be hearing this item today. It'll be heard at the October 24th meeting.
Okay. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
My name is Shelby Lippert. I live at 2600 Northwest 56th Street in Oklahoma City, 73112. I'm going to read from a letter that I submitted this morning. So, members of the Planning Committee and City Council, this letter further reinforces our opposition documents submitted on 10-4 and updated on 10-9, as well as presently attached, which relates to the proposed special development at 2601 Northwest 55th Place. Just to give you some background on myself, I'm an Oklahoma native, born and raised in northwest Oklahoma City, not more than a mile and a half from the Belle Isle neighborhood. I attended the, our very own Belle Isle Enterprise Middle School, situated at the heart of our neighborhood. I received a Bachelor of Science in Engineering Technology with a major in construction management technology from Oklahoma State University. After graduation, I moved to Texas and hired on with a construction company based out of Dallas. After a few years, I was asked to move to Houston to assist with the startup of a new satellite office. After years of living the big city life, I was feeling homesick and wanted to move back to Oklahoma. Immediately upon moving back, I rented a house at, on the 2600 block of Northwest 58th Street. After proposing to my wife, we started the search for our own house and, within Belle Isle. Because we were dating long distance, we actually placed an offer on our current house without my wife seeing it in person. She knew that the style and charm of Belle Isle neighborhood, so it made it easy to leave the detailed inspection of the bones to me, someone who had been in the construction industry his whole life. My wife Lacy and 18-month-old daughter Emily currently live in 2600 Northwest 56th Street, which is located in the north adjacent lots to this proposed development. Lacy is a primary teacher at Cassidy School, and I'm a Vice President and Project Manager at our own family-owned construction company, Lippert Brothers Construction, which celebrated our 100-year anniversary in 2020. Lacy and I love our city, and more importantly, we love our home. Our home would not be our home without the community of people that make up Belle Isle neighborhood, and the character and charm that the ranch-style homes bring to our neighborhood. At this point, I'm not sure whether to call it a spud or a lot split or what. It seems that the developers and city staff are trying to determine that, and that's okay. I intimately know that when it comes to building something new, even when it seems run-of-the-mill, it really, it's never really the same and comes with its own challenges. With that being said, I am grateful that the spud notification was distributed because it brought us here, and we only hope that our voices of our Belle Isle neighborhood community can be heard. Please do not be mistaken, we are opposing this development and its current design due to lack of meeting the architectural design that it portray, the architectural design that is portrayed by the vast majority of the Belle Isle neighborhood homes, as well as the breach of privacy that it proposes, this proposed design imposes on its fellow neighbors. This opposition statement is further backed by the opposition to spud 1671 document originally submitted on Sep, on October 4, 24, and updated copy submitted yesterday. Please note, the map included within the spud 1671 is outdated and does not reflect the current, reflect the increased density that has already been imposed on the Belle Isle neighborhood. It specifically does not reflect the lot splits and new homes that have already been constructed on Northwest 58th Street and Northwet, excuse me, Northwest 56th Street and Northwest 57th Street.
30 seconds, Mr. Lippert.
As you review these opposition documents and listen to our neighborhood community members, please ask yourself these questions. In our neighborhood, almost completely comprised of single-story homes, and would I want my neighbor to have a house twice as tall as mine? Would I want my neighbors to be able to watch my family, my daughter, through the back windows of our home, watch us play in the yard, watch us swim in our pool? Would I want to lose the charm of a neighborhood that dates back to the 1950s? And lastly, this dramatic change, is this dramatic change really necessary for our Belle Isle neighborhood, when there are so many other neighborhoods across our city and which the proposed design would fit in and further complement their specific architectural design? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the Mr. Lippert, if he's willing. Thank you for coming. First question for me. First, I don't know if you're aware, the Planning Commission hasn't received the spud, so that's not in my packet. I can't review it. I can't see it. Have you met with the applicant?
We have not.
And so, I hope that that can be facilitated before this item comes to Planning Commission in two weeks. And so, maybe, I don't know, Commissioner Powers, if you have already been in touch with the applicant too, but...
I've not yet been in touch with the applicant. This is a very strange situation. And I actually, I think I would like to hear from the other people who are here before I speak on this item.
Gotcha. Well, I would, I'll just say, I would encourage us that there be a meeting between the applicant and the neighbors to address their concerns before we come back to have the Planning Commission meeting. But again, just so you know, we haven't been informed, we haven't seen any designs. I don't have any of that, we don't have any of that information.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Lakin Hall.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Lakin Hall. Our address is 2606 Northwest 56th Street. I would like to simply and briefly add to Mr. Lippert's comments about our concerns for our privacy. The proposed development includes a design of a two-story residence to be built in the backyard of the home that is, that abuts our backyard. And so, I would like to add that that is my primary concern. The design includes windows on the second story that are, they create views into no less than five of the surrounding neighbors' backyards. And the privacy of our backyard is something that we value highly and would like to conserve. I would also add to his comments on the architectural language of the neighborhood. Firstly, the proposed design is 3,500 approximately square feet in a 6,000-square-foot lot, which exceeds the maximum lot coverage and the density requirements for R1 zoning. And I would close by saying that I believe the development proposed does not promote the welfare of the residents in our Belle Isle neighborhood. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. David Campbell.
My name is David Campbell, and I would like, because of the limitations of my voice, to speak last. All right.
Okay. Thank you. Taylor Gorgian.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Can.
I am requesting additional time because there are neighbors here that I am speaking on behalf of as well, and that did not ask to speak. Is that good?
We'll give you seven minutes.
Okay. And I do, before we start that seven minutes, can I ask a question back to Ward Seven about your question to Shelby? What, can you help us understand what you meant that you haven't received the spud?
This is the only information that we have, ma'am. You can have it. We haven't received the spud ourselves. So, because it's not being heard today, it's going to be heard at the next Planning Commission meeting.
So, you haven't received our opposition or anything like that?
Nothing. But we usually receive that when we're actually expected to vote on the item. So, since the applicant requested that it be continued, we don't typically object to the applicant asking for more time.
Okay. And outside of the applicant being deferred, are there any other things you're considering with this case?
I don't have any information, ma'am.
Okay. All right. So, oh, and last but not least, the contact. We, it is an LLC that does not have com, con, contact information, so when it comes to reaching out to them, we've had challenges there. So, if we could be provided additional contact information, we'd be happy to reach out to the applicant.
We can help with that.
Perfect. All right. Now, can I start?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Taylor Gorgian, and I live at 2601 Northwest 56th Street. Many of the people that were going to speak today, and the people that were willing and able to be here today, did not come because of the deferral. But a few of us decided to continue to come to represent the opposition for this case. And that being said, there has been thoughts that this deferral will not, or this spud will not be heard on the 24th, and it will be changed to just a lot split rather than a spud. And that back and forth and not giving the residents the opportunity to speak because of the potential deferral on the 24th feels like an injustice to the residents of the neighborhood. The opposition should be heard because the voice is very loud. The, we have letters, signatures, documents, and physical tendent, attendance that shows that over ni, almost 90% of the neighborhoods that, neighbors that received that 300-foot radius letter have signed the petition against it. On top of that, the outside neighbors within the next blocks have also signed it. So, we have a large majority of the residents asking to be heard, asking to be listened to, saying, "We do not want this build." We do propose in the opposition that you will receive alternatives that will support construction in the neighborhood, but we're asking to stay within the city ordinances of what the neighborhood is, is built on. Belle Isle has been around since the 1950s. You have 75 years of historic homes that have been scraped. Some of them have been, the lots have been scraped and rebuilt. So, just to touch on Shelby's point, there are houses on, there are three houses on one prior lot at 57th and Lynn, which is not in the map, your spud map at all, which makes us wonder, is, is the overpopulation being documented or the cluster being documented? Also, at 56th and Lynn, there are two houses on that lot, which we obtained petition signatures from, that aren't properly demonstrated on this map either. So, we ask that you really think about whether splitting a lot or doing the spud is in the best interest, as it's already started to happen, and we as a community want to put a stop to it. Because there is a church right behind my house that the builder had purchased, the builder that has done these other lots, and they potentially could put four more houses on there. So, you're, you have this, I feel like the floodgates are starting to open in Belle Isle because the approvals are happening on lit spots. Let me stop there. Spot, lit, lot splits, yeah, thanks, Giannis. Lot splits that are not even being documented, and so now you're going to have a whole potential block of a historic, Belle Isle neighborhood that are two-story, large homes that remove, that, that take away the, the privacy that our neighbors had originally purchased their homes in. So, as you all know, they've talked about the history and the, what Belle Isle neighbor, or lots are like, large, ranch-style homes that have charm. And the contractors that are coming in are splitting these lots to make a quick profit without thinking about the neighborhood in mind. If they did, they would build houses that fit our neighborhood. So, it makes it feel very impersonal and more about profit. There are, when you receive your packet, you will see that there are codes within the spud design that are inaccurate, and specifically 820016, and the building specs are not, not to code or in violation of what, what they're proposing. And then also, city ordinance is 14100.1 for the purpose and intent. Because of an item A and D, there are things in there about mass and strengthening the neighborhood and the community that this house goes against all of that. Also, or even the lot split. And then also, item number 14100.2, the goals and objectives. So, this is where it gets into how it will change our traffic. So, you have congestion that's already there, that's not documented, that is also going, it's at a stop sign where the driveway sits particularly right where someone would not see the stop sign, potentially causing harm to our neighbors. Also, a lot of our neighbors walk the lots, walk our streets. We don't have sidewalks, and we all get out and walk with families with children and dogs, and so having these cars block and provide, what's the word I'm looking for? Provide obstacles where they could potentially be in danger. As the other two talked about, privacy, I live at 56th and Lynn, and I'm across from one of the builds that were approved, and I have a window that just peers straight into my backyard. So, I've been dealing with this, and as a voice for everyone else, this is something that we feel like we need to stop before it continues to move, continues to grow in our neighborhood. So, with that, we did propose the, the changes that we would like to offer, but at the end of the day, if this goes, removes the spud and just goes to a lot split, we propose that Belle Isle be removed from the need to create more homes. We currently have 17 homes available for sale in Belle Isle, so the need is not there. So, with that, I thank you for your time. Does anybody have any questions? All right.
No. Thank you, Ms. Gorgian. Mike Bellinger?
Bellinger.
Please give us your name and address, and you have up to five minutes.
All right. My name's Mike Bellinger. I live at 2511 Northwest 55th Terrace in Belle Isle, and I've been a proud resident of that since 2005. I've personally had experience as a developer. I developed an 800-acre, 2,500-home development in Florida prior to moving here. I understand being a developer and what you have to do and the different problems associated with it. And I heartily endorse the statements that have been made by the previous homeowners. There are several homeowners in my block who couldn't be here today. I'm about two and a half blocks from the subject property, who are violently opposed to this. This change that's being requested does not benefit the Belle Isle neighborhood. It does not benefit the Belle Isle homeowners. It benefits one man who is going to make more money on the lots than if he just built single-family homes on the lot, I mean, the Belle Isle-type homes on the lots, or redid the homes. He could, people have been doing that now for the last five years, buying them, redoing, redoing them, bringing them, bringing them up to 2020, and getting them resold at nice profits. But this man wants more than a nice profit. He wants to crowd the land. And I think if you look at it, and I haven't had a chance to look at the detailed plans, but I know that the way, the number of houses he's putting on the space he is, if that continues, it's going to create major drainage problems in that area, where now we just have the beginning of a little drainage problem. So, my, my big point is that this doesn't benefit our community. The vast majority of the community is against it. I don't know anyone, any of my neighbors who are for it. And it's with good reason, because it would change the lifestyle of an area that is a great place for families to live in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bellinger. So then, lastly, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Well, as you can see, our neighborhood is really a very cohesive area. I've lived there since 1992, so I'm probably the oldest one that has lived in that area that is here. There are people that have lived there longer than I have. We understand that this is just a rezoning or a lot split. I'm not quite sure how this is going to go together. But I have looked at this LLC. I've looked at some of their other work, and their design starts just like this. They take a large lot, they split it off into three pieces and put three houses on it. They're not asking you to do that. All they're asking is a very simple thing of, let's just splitting this lot in two. Well, they're not splitting the lot in two. They're giving 40 feet to one side of the lot, leaving 80 feet by 100 feet that will, they will come back and ask you to split that one again, so they can put that up. There's an existing house on there, and all we're asking is not to split this lot at this time. Thank you.
All right.
Did we get Mr. Campbell's name and address?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Campbell. Can you give your name and address for the record?
I apologize for that. I'm David Campbell. I live at 2544 Northwest 55th Place, which is diagonally across the street from this piece of property.
Thank you. Do you, did you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you. And so, the, the reason that this is, is kind of in a vacuum here is that when I was notified about this, the, the SPUD application had been recommended for, or Ms. Gorgian called me and indicated that, that this SPUD was coming up. Then, as it turned out, the SPUD had been, had been recommended for continuance, or I thought at the time, there had been a request for continuance. The neighbors' concern at that point specifically was that that might be some kind of a ruse, that the applicant might ask for a continuance, but then show up on the day of and want to be heard, and they wouldn't be here to present their case. So, you know, my, my initial concern was just in reassuring her that that was not going to happen. And, and as I was thinking about it, I was thinking, you know, it's never, ever happened in the entire time I've sat on the Planning Commission. But I wanted to contact a staff and ask whether there was some, you know, mechanism I might be missing that would make that possible. And, but when I contacted staff, I was told that this application was actually recommended for continuance by staff because they were not sure that the applicant really needs to rezone the property to do what they want to do with the property, which clearly is to split the lot in two pieces and build at least one additional structure. What will happen to the existing structure at 2601, I'm not aware. I haven't seen any of the plans. I don't have any of that information available to me. And, and I will confess, that at that point, it kind of struck me that this is a significant issue in this neighborhood, maybe others. Belle Isle is a neighborhood of, you know, has been built out almost forever. There were a few additional new homes built right behind what used to be the charcoal oven, when that piece of property became available for development. But there have been a few of these, and they were one-offs done by SPUD for, for one reason or another that made sense at the time for those. But they are corner lots, they are, these, this particular lot is tract, I should say, is four 25-foot-wide lots. So, they're large, they can certainly be split and support development that will meet all the standards of R1. But it is also true that this kind of development pattern is going to be very disruptive to the physical characteristics of this neighborhood. And so, I spent most of my time thinking about that. It was over the weekend. I did not contact Ms. Clark yet to find out whether or not she plans to meet with the applicants. I, I would certainly recommend that she do that, no matter what she's planning to do, whether by lot split or a rezoning request. But I, as I understand it, I think staff has reached the conclusion that this, that what they are proposing at this point can be done without having to vary the standards, and therefore could be done by lot split. and therefore could be done by lot split rather than by rezoning. And, and that's kind of a dilemma for me, because I'm not sure, yes, there are plenty of portions of the comprehensive plan that talk about maintaining the character of these neighborhoods and so on. If this pattern continues, every corner lot in Belle Isle is going to be up for grabs. The home that's at 2601 is not in great shape. It's been bought and sold several times over the last decade. Whether they will scrape that and build two, two-and-a-half-story, thirty-five-foot-tall buildings, or whether it will be single-story, two-and-a-half-stories, single-story, you know, on this corner, I don't know. I, I haven't heard yet what their plan is with respect to the existing structure. And, and so, I informed the protestors who had contacted me that, you know, this might be their only opportunity to be heard on this topic. I think it is worthwhile for us to hear them and think about what this is going to mean, not just for this neighborhood, but maybe for some others, and see if this is something that we feel like we need to or want to get involved in, and, and if so, whether there's even a path for us to do that. So.
So the lot split would be administratively, could be done administratively? It wouldn't require our approval?
It, it sounds like staff has reached that conclusion.
I can clarify, so, yes, the, so anybody who has the, the lot that's the appropriate size, if there's enough, if the lot's big enough, they could split it to conform with the current zoning. Everybody has the right to do that. That is in fact the case here. The lot split has already actually taken, taken place. So the, those administrative lot splits happen fairly regularly throughout our 620 square miles. If, if the zoning's in place, the property owner has the right to do that. That's been in place for many, many, many years. So at this point, the, the applicant could continue their SPUD if they feel like they want to try and do something that the zoning doesn't allow, like, I think some of the examples that, that some of the speakers I've mentioned today, you know, that they wanted to try and make it to a little bit bigger than the zoning might allow, or something like that, they could proceed with the SPUD, in which case it'll show up on the planning commission agenda, and, and you'll have an additional opportunity. They could also, if they feel like the zoning, as it sits now with the standard R1, which you all have, if that meets their needs, they could withdraw the application and then just, just proceed with whatever the zoning allows with the current setbacks and the height regulations that you all, that your neighborhood, that applies to your neighborhood. So that's kind of where it sits right now. I would say, and again, staff can certainly facilitate getting you contact information and helping you get with the property owner, because there are things that, even if they withdraw, there are things they could do to address privacy issues. For example, have clear-story windows, have opaque windows, you know, do, do a single-story. There are all kinds of options that, that they can still take, in good faith, working with you all to, to address concerns, if that's their choice to just move forward with the current zoning. So hopefully that clarifies things. That's where we sit at this time.
If, if the lot split deed approval is issued, of course, there's an appeal through the Board of Adjustment to that decision. That's one option. As I understand it, the, the issue here really is that the, the lot with existing structure on it is worth about half of what a single home built in this more vertical style would be worth on the back half. So if they choose to do both of them, I suppose it's like, you know, twice as much. So, I mean, it, this is, this, there's a, a financial incentive here, there's no doubt about it, to move into this neighborhood that's, you know, well-established and has pretty stable property values and, you know, attack it sort of one corner at a time. Again, whether that's something that we feel the need to get involved in or not, it was something that I thought was worthwhile for us to be aware of.
All right, so I know that's, that's not what the neighbors wanted to hear, but I just want to remind everyone that the action before us today is that we're not going to take any action other than to defer the item. So just looking for a motion to...
Well, and before we, and I'm happy to make the motion, but I, but I do want to clarify for our neighbors, we as the commission do not have the authority to mandate that they bring this lot, administrative lot split to us. We don't have the authority to mandate that the applicant do a spud. But I do think that we're firm believers in our neighbors having conversation with neighbors about what their expectations are when they fit into the neighborhood. And so I'm sure any of us would be willing to help in facilitating those conversations with the, with the actual applicant. But with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll move to approve the, the uncontested continuance request as read.
All right, we have a motion to approve the uncontested continuance request. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. Those are approved. Any new requests?
We have one new request, item 10, case SPUD 1673, request to defer to October 24th.
Is there anyone here to be heard on item 10? All right, seen none, I just need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the new request as read.
A motion to approve the new request. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. That is approved. Item four, the consent docket.
Item one is KC 7685, final plat of Kings Ridge Lake Estates Phase Two, located north of Northwest 23rd Street and west of North Sarah Road. Item two, KC 7686, final plat of the lakes at Anissee Phase Two, located south of Northwest 150th Street and west of North MacArthur Boulevard.
All right. Is there anyone here to speak on the consent docket? All right, just need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent docket.
A motion to approve the consent docket. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. The consent docket passes. Item three.
Item three, KC 7688, final plat of Block Rock Canyon, and this is located south of West Memorial Road and west of North County Line Road, along with the variance due to subdivision regulation.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Court Drive, on behalf of the applicant. This is a final plat, and as Mr. Butler said, we do need the variance, however, we are providing a stub to the west. However, the variance is needed because it'll serve as a temporary variance. We will stub to the west, which will eventually connect the neighborhood to the south. As you can see, that the neighborhood to the south has no stubs platted, and it's already existing. That, that street right there will eventually connect north and will allow us to tie into the west. So the variance will really be kind of temporary in nature until such time that that goes north.
Commissioner Noble, this is Ward Eight.
So, and then there was another question about whether this was R1ZL or...
I believe the zoning allows R1ZL, but it looks like the lots are slightly higher than that. I'll tell you that the plat does conform to the zoning.
So was it ten and ten or zero and ten? Do you know?
What's that?
Is it ten, ten and ten or zero and ten?
I don't know exactly.
Or five and five, I mean. Okay. I think there was just a question on that. And there's, I think it's a, it's five houses that are requiring the variance. I mean, it's...
Correct.
It's a hundred and five instead of just a hundred.
And like I said, the variance is really, it's a temporary variance. It will go away, because we will, in the end, have the interconnection required by the sub-racks. It's just the location that the development to the south chose to stub doesn't quite reach our western line.
And it looks like there's a stub in yours going to the south. Right?
Yeah, so it'll be redesigned, and instead we'll stub to the west.
To that one to the west, okay. Any other commissioners have anything to say? Anyone signed up to speak?
I have none.
Do the variance first. Make a motion to, for a variance to section 5.2.8.C of the subdivision regulation.
A motion to approve the variance. It's been seconded by Commissioner Pennington. Please cast your votes. And the variance passes. And now the item?
I'd like to make a motion to approve C 7688.
Subject to the technical evaluations?
Subject to the technical evaluation.
A motion to approve the item subject to the technical evaluation, seconded by Commissioner Pennington. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
Item five.
Item four?
Oh, I'm sorry, four.
Item four is a preliminary plat, C 7687 is the case number, preliminary plat of the cottages, located north of Southwest 29th Street and west of South Portland Avenue.
Good afternoon, Steve Rollins, Ark Engineering Consultants, 135 Deer Creek Road, representing the applicant. The zoning for this preliminary plat, SPUD 1647, was approved on 9/24, just a couple of weeks ago. This is a 3.67 acres, located near Southwest 29th and Portland. I think your staff report might say 28 lots. That's my fault. It's actually 27 lots. I misnumbered the lots. But otherwise, 27 lots, preliminary plats in conformance with the SPUD. Staff's in favor of the application, and we're in agreement with the TEs. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Mr. Meek, this is Ward Three.
Yes, sir. This, this preliminary plat looks to conform with everything that was agreed upon, and is there anyone signed up to speak regarding this?
No, I don't have anyone for this item.
All right. With that, anybody have any comments? With that, I'd like to pretty recommend approve C 7687 with the technical evaluations as listed.
A motion to approve the item subject to the technical evaluations. It's been seconded by Commissioner Newman. Please cast your votes. And item passes. Now we're at item five.
Item five is KC VP-4, application to vacate a portion of the final plat of Northwest Heights Edition. This is located north of Northwest 63rd Street and east of Northwestern Avenue.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Court Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Jared, would you put the location map up? So this is a, oh, yeah, this is a partial plat vacation that is relevant to the spud 1602 that you see at the top of the hash line. That was a spud that we came through a few months ago to do a multifamily project right there at Ollie and Northwest 67th. As we were moving towards building, we found an old plat restriction regarding building lot lines as well as sidewalk restrictions. And that restriction actually applied to all of this property. And so my client, in an effort to vacate that plat instrument, contacted all the folks that are now included in this to remove that archaic limitation. So it's going to benefit all those property owners. You may recall, spud 1570 was a large bank for Bank Seven to be on the corner. It would have also had that problem, so this will clean it up for that whole area. There is one TE that we agree to. Happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Powers, this is your ward.
And I do not have any problem at all with this. This is just, you know, kind of ancient clerical error, more or less. And this is, at, at one time, this area was anticipated to develop residentially. Clearly, it is not that. The removal of some of the plat restriction that's this, oh, this does not cause me any heartburn whatsoever.
Any other questions, comments? I think we're just ready for a motion.
I, I will move approval of item number five, VP-4.
A motion to approve the item subject to the technical evaluation. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item six.
Item six is KC E 1128. This is an application to close thirteen-and-a-half-feet of, of a right-of-way drainage and utility easement for North May Avenue along the east side of North May Avenue and generally north of Manera Way.
Hello, Jessica Bloy with Johnson and Associates, representing the applicant, Winnie Sheridan. The closure before you today is to close the 13.5 utility easement. This easement is no longer needed, and there are no utilities existing within the easement. Staff has recommended approval, and there are no TEs. Happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Noble, this is Ward Eight.
Do anyone sign up to speak?
No, sir.
Okay, this is another simple little easement closure. So with that, I'd like to recommend approval of CE 1128.
Motion to recommend approval of item CE 1128. It's been seconded by Mr. Pennington. Please cast your votes. And item passes. On to item seven.
Item seven is a resolution of the City of Oklahoma City Planning Commission, finding that the proposed amendments to the Northeast Renaissance Redevelopment Project Plan are in conformance with the city's comprehensive plan, and recommending approval of the amended and restated Northeast Renaissance Redevelopment Project Plan 2024.
Do we have a presentation on this item?
I believe we were supposed to. It's like Joanna's not, we might need to move this to the end.
All right, we can, we can move this toward the back. So then we will hear item eight.
Item eight is a resolution of the, of the Planning Commission appointing Rusty La Forge as the representative of the Planning Commission to serve as its representative on the Innovation District Project Plan Review Committee, Downtown Maps Tax Increment Tax, Tax Increment District Review Committee, Riverfront Development Review Committee, Wheeler Development District Review Committee, Northeast Renaissance Increment District Review Committee, and Court of Shore Reinvestment Area Review Committee.
All right. I think you'd make an excellent candidate, so represent us well.
Have you put your job? You're just going to just turn this down on?
My years of refusing to do anything else, Board of Adjustment or otherwise, are going to catch up with me. Some of these, I think, are slowing down TIFs, but the new ones are busy. Glad to, glad to serve in this capacity, though.
So we just need a motion to approve the resolution?
I move to approve the resolution, appointing Rusty to the, was it TIF? Whatever the resolution says.
You're not, you're not going to read the whole thing? Okay. All right, it's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your vote. And that is unanimous, of course. All right, item nine.
Item nine is SPUD 1674, application to rezone 10601 North I-35 Service Road from C-3 to SPUD 1674.
David Box, 522 Call Court Drive. This is a SPD application along I-35 to allow for boat sales, service, and storage. It's an, an area that has a lot of heavy, large warehouse uses just south of Hefner Road. There are no TEs. Happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Pennington, this is Ward Seven.
I've met with the applicant. This is totally appropriate based on its proximity to other industrial uses. Fully in support. I'm certain there's no one signed up to speak.
No.
And I'm sure, any comment from commissioners? Then, Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend a city council approval of SPUD 1674.
A motion from Commissioner Pennington to recommend approval of city council of SPUD 1674. It's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
And item passes. Item 10 has been deferred. That brings us to item 11.
Item 11 is PUD 2029, application rezone 8512 Southwest 29th Street from R1.
David Box, 522 Call Court Drive, here again on behalf of the applicant. We spent many hours discussing this item two weeks ago. What I would like to do is focus on the issue that we were left hanging on and not relitigate the entirety of it, but... but just as a reminder, briefly remind the commission where we were. Multifamily project in which we have committed to a 70-foot building setback line with a 20-foot landscape buffer, an eight-foot masonry wall around the entirety of the site, except for, of course, the northern line, which we propose to be decorative wrought iron. Staff recommends approval, there was a TE that we agree with with a slight tweak, this is the same, you know, site plan we showed you last time.
Do you mind just turning around and showing that to the audience as well?
Yeah. And staff should have it as well, if you want to put it on the screen. At the last time, we, we had made changes about the broadside of buildings being changed, that's an old one.
Yeah, I'll just note that that's, that's not the current one.
Yeah, so the broadside of all the buildings are facing north and south, which is what the request was of the neighborhood. We believe we've, we've met with a lot of the requests that they've had, and again, we really were focusing on the issue of traffic, specifically on the 29th Street in this intersection of County Line and 29th. And so we took the last two weeks to work with staff to try to find a way to tie what it is we want to do with the improvement of 29th Street. It's worth kind of explaining what we're doing. So there is a portion of 29th going from Council Road to the west that's already four-laned, but it stops. What my client is going to do is to pay for and install the street to be four-laned from the point in which it stops being four-lanes all the way to County Line Road. So what that will mean is, this entire mile will now have a four-lane built-to-city-standard section. Additionally, they have agreed to pay for and install a traffic signal at the intersection of County Line and Southwest 29th. As of yesterday about 5:00, Public Works came back and asked us to clarify, did the installation of the traffic signal at 29th and County Line include the widening of that intersection to include turn lanes at all four spokes? The answer is, yes, it does. So what I'm going to propose is the TE that I've handed out, that is a combination of wording asked by Mr. Work as well as Public Works and my client. So I'll just read it. Developers shall be required to pay for and install the widening of Southwest 29th Street from County Line Road East to tie into the existing four-lane section and the installation of signalization at the intersection of Southwest 29th Street and County Line Road prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any structure on site. The Southwest 29th Street widening shall be to a four-lane section and shall include dedicated left-turn lanes on all four approaches at the intersection of Southwest 29th and County Line Road. All design and construction shall be in accordance with the requirements of the Public Works Department and all applicable City of Oklahoma City standards and specifications. These special conditions shall not be administratively amended. What this represents is the first and only time that a developer has gone this far to solve what is undoubtedly a city problem. This is city infrastructure that my client is willing to spend their funds to ensure fixes a problem that exists. Now, I understand that there may be some people that complain about County Line north and south of 29th Street. However, those intersections are going to be fully widened with the turn lanes, ready to go, when hopefully the city will take the momentum created here with this significant gift and put it on a brown project or find funds to extend this momentum that my client is willing to start. So with that, I'm happy to talk as long as you want about the details of the case, but given that we spoke for two hours about it last time, I'd reserve it to any, I guess, rebuttal, for lack of a better word, after the neighbors. But my hope is, we focus on this language, which, again, part of the language came from Mr. Work, we agreed to his suggested change, part of the language came from Public Works Department, we agreed to what they asked us to put in here, and then part of the language came from my client. So it really is a joint effort from all three parties. So I would add this as a TE, and then the only other TE we need to add is require the eight-foot masonry wall to be on the south and west as well. In the PUD, it says east, but we're going to make sure that the masonry wall is on the east, the south, and the west, not on the north. And I do need to modify the one TE that's in the staff report to delete the words after requirements, so that it reads, access shall be required along the south boundary of the, south PUD boundary in a manner that meets fire department requirements. Our community will be a gated community, so we don't want to have just an open street stub. It'll be a fire access control gate, so that it's there in case of emergency, but it's not a pass-through for the neighborhood to the south. They won't need it, now that my client's going to build them a brand-new four-lane road along 29th Street.
Any questions or comments from commissioners before we hear from neighbors? No? All right, Mr. Work?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, my name is Kelly Work, my address is 105 North Hudson, Suite 304, Oklahoma City, and I am appearing here on behalf of a group of residents of the Shox Western Heights neighborhood, which is the residential neighborhood directly east of the subject property. We remain opposed to the proposed P-U-D-2029 and ask that you deny it. And I know you all patiently listened to us two weeks ago when we were here on the 26th and expressed our opposition, and, but I do want to just briefly remind you the reasons why we feel this proposed P-U-D is not appropriate at this location. And again, this is a, if I could, this is an aerial photo that is relatively recent, from June of this year, from the County Assessor's Office. The subject property, which is 25 acres approximately, is there highlighted in red, and then to the east edge of this aerial is where Council Road runs north and south, and then on the west edge here, you see just past County Line. So it gives you a sense of that mile-long section there between Council and County Line. The characteristic of this area is residential, single-family residential. The Western Heights neighborhood to the east has been there many, many years, those lots range from one and a half acres to three acres. The Coventry Manor neighborhood, which is to the northeast across 29th Street, is kind of a more typical single-family subdivision. And then directly across the street north, in the process of being developed presently, is a, is a development called Anton's Landing, and that's also single-family residential, and they have, they will have a minimum lot size of a third of an acre, so approximately 15,000 square foot lots in that addition. This area that then is south and west is also begun development, it's called Buffalo Farms, and it's, it's a small lot, single-family residential. And then it does have provision in the north half, it allowed a portion of the property to be developed with a senior independent living facility. And, and, but otherwise, it is predominantly single-family residential. So, and this piece here is, is like, is being carved out by this owner of the subject property, so that apparently is retaining that residential property there that is carved out of the larger tract, leaving the subject property to be this 25 acres. So the principal concern that we have is just that this is just not an appropriate location for a multifamily residential development that could contain up to 400 residential units, where they're essentially going to have one way in and out off of Southwest 29th Street, and that it is just out of character for the area and would more appropriately be located closer to the section line of two arterials rather than here, that is, at the half-section. So here, we're a half-mile off of the section line from either Council or County Line, proposing to put this very dense multifamily residential development. We remain opposed primarily for that reason, it's, we don't think it's an appropriate location. There are a number of other locations in the area that we believe would be more appropriate for a multifamily residential development at this density that wouldn't have the significant impact on the character of, of the area that this one would have at this location. So we remain opposed and, and again, ask you not to recommend approval, but to recommend denial of this application. There are a couple of points specifically with regard to the language of the P-U-D that I also want to address that I think need your attention. And one of those is, is that Mr. Box said at the meeting on the 26th, and he said again today, that the orientation of the buildings, the multifamily residential buildings, would be with the broadsides facing north and south. And, but that is not exactly what the P-U-D says. What the P-U-D says is that they may not face east and west within the first 100 feet from the east boundary. So once they get 100 feet away, then they're fully permitted to have the broadside facing east and west of as many of these buildings as they choose. And also, the, this site plan that Mr. Box has held up, it's dated September 25th, 2024, this has not been submitted with this application to the staff. And as you saw with the, the site plan that was pulled up earlier, the one that is still submitted with the application is dated September 3rd, and it shows the buildings oriented with the broadsides facing east and west for the middle two buildings adjacent to the east boundary of the property. And it also shows an emergency access onto Eagle Lane rather than what we understand they're now proposing, which is an emergency access on the south end. So we're concerned that that's going to create some confusion going forward because they still have a conceptual site plan that shows the buildings with the broadsides oriented east and west, and it shows an emergency access onto Eagle Lane. So we, we think that's, needs to be appropriately addressed. The, another thing is that in the, they have provided under the terms of the P-U-D for a 20-foot landscape buffer along the east boundary. And then they have specified in there that the landscape buffer shall consist of six-inch caliper trees to provide additional screening, which is great, we want to have six-inch caliper trees if this development were to go forward. But the problem is, is that there's no specification of the number of trees or how they would be spaced. It just says that six-inch caliper trees, well, that could consist of two trees, literally. So that is another issue that, that we suggest needs to be addressed so that there is, so that it's clear if this application were to be approved, and it comes before the plan review for approval of a building permit or later for approval of an occupancy permit, that they can look at the P-U-D document and see if it, what has been done complies with the terms of the P-U-D. And so that is another issue that we, we suggest need be addressed. The, at the presentation that was made to the residents by the applicant some time ago, I'm told, they, it was explained that there would be essentially a solid cover of landscaping along that east boundary and that it would provide a, a complete visual barrier from their properties. But if that's what is intended, then that just needs to be specified under the terms of the P-U-D. But for, for the reasons that, that I've stated, we, we don't think that this proposed multifamily complex at this 400-unit possible density is appropriate at this location, and we request that you deny it. I know there are a number of the residents that, that also want to briefly give some remarks to you as well. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have of me.
Any questions for Mr. Work?
I do. What are your, what's, so, to clarify, you want us, if this were to go forward, you'd want us to clarify that there would be no access onto Eagle Lane? You'd want us to make sure that the orientation of the apartments is, so that they face north and south throughout the entire parcel, not just in the first 100 feet, is what you're saying? That's what you're saying, right? That's one of your concerns?
Both of those issues, yes, are concerns that we have. I believe the language actually does say that access would not be permitted to Eagle Lane. The concern that we have is the confusion that may be created because they have a site plan that actually shows that there is an emergency access onto Eagle Lane.
So you want us to clarify?
That's part of the application.
So you want us to clarify that there will also not be, that there's no access, and that includes no emergency access? In the language of the PUD?
I think that would be appropriate, yes, and then I think it also would be appropriate for them to submit the conceptual plan that they intend to govern, or at least that they intend to be part of the application going forward. And it's my understanding that has not occurred as of this time.
Okay, but the, but the exhibit, as you know, is not the binding part.
I understand, but, but there is an exhibit that's in there, and it, and it shows both buildings that are with the broadsides facing east and west, and then it shows an emergency access onto Eagle Lane. So given that we have seen the confusion that can be created from conceptual plans that show something different from the text of the, of the design statement with the Class and Curve Project, a prime example that is pending today, we suggest that needs to be clarified.
Okay, and then can we talk about the, the trees? I, I know we're going to be listening to our neighbors speak shortly, I would love to hear specific language, exactly what you're asking for, like, exactly what you wanted to say. If you're concerned that it's not going to be sufficient trees, it's not going to be sufficient landscaping, I'd love to hear exactly how it should read, because based on the way I've seen us previously approve, applications like this, with regard, I'm not saying we're going to vote to approve this. What I am saying is, with regard to landscape buffers, this language sounds very similar to what we've previously done. So I'm wanting to understand what special or different language you think would be best to address that concern? And you don't have to answer it right now, you want to take a minute and make a recommendation?
I don't think we're asking for anything special or different, Commissioner. What is lacking is, they are saying they will provide six-inch caliper trees, they've not specified how many or what the spacing would be on those trees.
So I'm asking you, Kelly, to make a recommendation to us about what appropriate spacing would be and an appropriate number would be.
I think we need to hear from the applicant in that regard.
That's fine, but...
But you're, that's, yeah, I was about to say, but you're the one asking for it, and I'm saying in response to you, well, but this language is consistent with how we've approved other landscape buffers.
What would commonly be established, they do have on their conceptual site plan some landscaping shown. Is that what is being proposed? It wouldn't be unusual, for example, for it to be specified with a size of tree on 20-foot centers, for example. That would probably be reasonable.
Okay.
But right now, it doesn't specify.
Okay, maybe, maybe if while we're listening to our neighbors, you might come back with something more specific that we can respond to. I'm sensitive to this issue, I want us to address it, I just want to know how, in a way that's satisfactory to you and the neighbors.
Yeah, well, I think it's a good question to put to the applicant because they made certain representations to the residents about the landscaping that would be provided. So what exactly is intended, it needs to be specified in the P-U-D. We don't think we're being unreasonable in making that request, we don't think we're asking for anything special.
I apologize if my, the way that I phrase that, I'm just wanting to make sure I fully understand what you want and that I can see, understand that so that we can try to implement what you want exactly. So that was my intention, so I...
We would, we would suggest that a reasonable approach would be to specify that those six-inch caliper trees along the east boundary would be on 20-foot centers.
Okay.
I'm going to, I'm going to have one more, one more for you, Mr. Work. And I'd also maybe like to hear from, from our landscape architect chair, you know, tree spacing is also somewhat dependent on species, and sometimes 20-foot centers is not right, actually you want 30-foot and you get a better coverage. I don't, I'm not going to comment on that because it's not my area of expertise. From a building point of view, because on the, on the orientation of the buildings and the distance, I completely understand the, the reason for that of face, running the broadside east-west for, for views in proximity to adjacent neighbors. There's a 100-foot distance noted, I agree that it could be, that's an appropriate point to talk about of what's the right distance, and it could be more than that. and it could be more than that. I don't personally feel that the right way to approach that is they all have to face east-west without question on the whole site because that does not encourage a better development with variety and sense of community and enclosure. So, personally, if I... As an architect and thinking about that particular issue, I think if we want to enforce a greater distance from the east or west, fair enough, but I think there should be some flexibility for the applicant to arrange buildings in a sense that walks wind and can it better adapt to some variety of views and light conditions? And promote community, yeah. So, I think we should talk about the distance and get that right, just like the spacing of trees.
If I could just respond briefly, Commissioner, that we certainly agree that that's a reasonable approach to take. We were responding because the applicant's representative made the statement at the... Both this meeting and at the meeting on the 26th that the buildings would be oriented with the broadsides facing north and south. We're just responding to that statement.
And you're saying your understanding of that statement was that that's just a fact for the whole site?
If that's what they're saying, it's not what the PUD document said.
Yes, right, right, right. Okay.
All right. Do we want to hear from some neighbors? All right. Stephanie Jimenez?
Thank you. I'm Stephanie Jimenez. I live at 8401 Southwest 35th Street. And my... 10 years ago, I bought my grandparents' house, so raising my kids there now. So, I'm also here, just like Box said, to briefly remind you of the elements of what we discussed two weeks ago. He said that we were focused on traffic. Well, we have other points that we are focused on besides traffic. He also said that the traffic is a city problem, which is correct, but the developer also has a problem because of the other elements that we are focused on, such as the character of our neighborhood. So, yes, there is a piece of land available for the development literally in the middle portion of a minor arterial road, as you can see. It is surrounded by single-family homes, two-and-a-half-acre lots to the east, half-acre lots to the northeast, and three-quarter acre lots to the northwest and regular-sized lots in the remaining areas. Only 17 property owners were notified originally of this request for rezoning, yet the city received over 250 written requests that this zoning be denied. These represent 250 stakeholders, 250 homeowners, and 250 voters. If over 250 letters also represent 250 voters, then there are more voters within these homes who are against the rezoning. I am experiencing constituents in Ward 3 who are paying attention and talking to each other. Constituents want this land to remain zoned as residential one. It goes against all sound judgment for this land to be changed from R1 to anything whatsoever that does not resemble the character of the land that surrounds it. As I understand, your main focus, Commissioners, is to determine appropriate uses for land. Apartments would not be in appropriate use for this land. We ask that you use practical wisdom and deny this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jimenez. Katie Helen? No? Amy Martin?
Hello. My name's Amy Martin, and I reside at 3300 South Eagle Lane. And the proposed development will be visible from the front door of my 2.8-acre property. You've all been aware of this PUD for a couple of months now, and I know you've looked at various maps, road reports, and other exciting documents. But I hope that you have all taken the time to drive around our entire community and to drive down our little street because looking at the documents and the photos isn't going to give you the wow factor that you'll all feel or that we all feel when we arrive home. I invite you all to come fish in our lake, play some games in our backyard, and sit on our patio, all while sinking in the beauty. If you're going to say yes or approve something, you should know exactly what you are approving and why. An approval of this PUD cannot be justified. It does not make sense, and it does not fit the character of the neighborhood. Don't get lost in all the laws, the regulations, the stipulations. And please, don't be lured in by... Don't be sucked in by the lure of a free street. It's not about the street. Y'all heard "street," and y'all went crazy. It was never about the street. It never has been. The question you are being asked here to decide today, is this a good use of the land? No, it is not. The other question you're being asked is, is what is being proposed better than what the land is already approved for? No, it's not. It's zoned for R1 for a reason. You got it right the first time. Don't mess it up. Don't mess with perfection. That's what it was meant to be. PUD 2029 is a radical departure from the character of our neighborhood. PUD 2029 and its high density will suffocate us. You heard me say last time, on 25 acres in our neighborhood is 10 houses. 25 acres, 400 apartments. Come on, y'all. Practical common sense. I love that my neighbor Steph said that. It just fits. PUD 2029 will drastically change our neighborhood. PUD 2029 is not a good use of the land. The proposal of PUD 2029 is not better than what the land is already approved for. PUD 2029 must be denied. Please, we deplore you. It's not appropriate use of the land. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Beverly Kofed?
My name is Beverly Kofed. I live at 8425 Southwest 31st Street, 35th Street, and I've been there since 1981. I do ask you that you do not... That you deny the PUD 2029. Is 400... Is a 400-unit, three-story apartment complex at this location, which is surrounded by single-family residential homes, is that appropriate? Is a 400-unit, three-story apartment complex at this location blend with the style and character of our homes and our neighborhoods? There are other lands in the surrounding area that have infrastructure that can support a 400-unit, three-story apartment complex. I again ask you to deny PUD 2029.
Thank you. Gary Kofed?
Gary Kofed, 8425 Southwest 35th Street. Reiterate, as we've been saying, we're all opposed to the... This PUD as presently written should remain single-family residential. A 400-unit apartment complex on 25 acres of land is an island in the middle... An island in the middle of a residential neighborhood. There are single-family residents to the north, south, east, and west, and all on rather large pieces of land. The Buffalo Farms will be density of about 5.85 units per acre. Is... One of the things I learned in working major projects when I was at Devon and Kerr McGee is the premise of doing the right things right. Says you cannot make a decision offered on a carrot that ignores the basic variables. Approval of this project should be won. Is the project in character with the existing and currently approved developing areas? The answer is no. This is all single-family residential. Is development located in an area that is appropriate for the scale of the project? The answer is no. This project is located in the middle of a section line with residential on either side to the south and north. Now, again, just the answer is no. Other large... I'll make another note here, though. There's other large-scale apartment complexes and developments in this area, and all of them are located off major arterial streets, access usually on the corners, access from a major arterial street to a minor. So, it's not landlocked in the middle of an intersection. Does the proposed development respect the quality of existing life in the neighborhoods and the developing neighborhoods? The answer is no. Everything's... Our quality of life is based on a... Really, an urban-type lifestyle, not surrounded by being put in the middle of a giant apartment complex. Any reason to approve based on a carrot dangled out there, the street improvements? It still does not change the answers to basic premises. The answer is still no. Is... I understand the appeal of the street being widened by the developer. Is... But still, it's a carrot that should not affect a real decision. Is this an appropriate project and appropriate use of the land? It was mentioned in the street project, as it was written, is one item that was left out from the discussions I have read and heard is no... The apartments cannot be occupied until the street project is completed. Is another thing that I just thought of is... Beverly and I's house is located... We... Our only source of water is a water well. Is the aquifer being protected? Our well is about 25 foot deep. If you went over and looked at the drainage retention pond that's being built by Buffalo Farms, maybe 20 foot deep, you can see the surface... The water surface... Water coming up into the surface. So, it just makes it more... I'm more concerned that the project is not going to protect our well water. I need some assurances that it would. Is... There are other options for development of this area. Is it could be developed in other options? Single-family residential is what we want, but there are other options that could be available, and you could see other options if you scout our neighborhoods around the area that are pretty good examples of how the area could be used as a multi-unit, a multifamily residential that does resemble a single-family residential in a lot less scale. Any questions, I'd be glad to answer. Thanks.
Scott Eggleston?
Good afternoon. My name's Scott Eggleston. I live at 3300 South Eagle Lane. The heart of the matter with this issue is it's proper land use. There's a whole section of Oklahoma City's comprehensive plan, Sustain OKC-11, dedicated to preserving the rural character by managing the growth of urban development. The developer knows that this isn't a proper use of land. That's why they resort to disrespectful tactics to undermine the community opposed to the project. We saw this in the last meeting, right at the 11th hour. They show up, hey, we're going to pay for this road, and then patting themselves on the back, all right? And they did it again today. You know, we were getting updates via email up until almost 11 o'clock just a few hours ago, all right? And then, have never had a chance to discuss it with any of the community that isn't able to attend the meeting, didn't have a chance to discuss it with our lawyers. So, the issue is the developer is they want to build 400 apartments a half-mile from the main arterial streets right in the middle of numerous single-family home neighborhoods. This is an assault on the character of our neighborhood. Whether or not the developer is offering to pay for the road, it's irrelevant, all right? Plus, even with road improvements, roads are all going from a small section of four-lane road and dumping into two-lane roads going north, south, and continuing on west, all right? Traffic will still bottleneck, all right? The rezoning will add even more congestion to the area that already has another 2,000-plus single-family homes already approved and in different phases of construction. Their plan does not improve traffic... The traffic situation regardless of who puts the bill. The fact remains, 400 apartments still do not fit the character of the neighborhood. We're a community of single-family homes on half-acre or more plots of land. Plan OKC-11 states that the integrity and rural character of existing developments should be respected. Our community still remains opposed to this project. Thank you.
James... I'm sorry, Hoge?
Lega.
Lega.
Hello. My name is James Lega. I live at 3,000 South Eagle Lane. I have to say that knot in my stomach hasn't gone away. Since I've stood before you here on the 26th, the proposed development is no more in harmony or compatible with the surrounding area than it started. I need to be very clear. We remain opposed to this short-sighted idea, and ask that we stop it here. Now, I would like to receive some clarification on this development and even maybe give a little bit of clarification from my side. With that, just as I have to have uninsured motorists or insurance to minimize the impacts of thievery, I feel I have to ask for insurance against those that are plainly not worried about the impact of the surrounding area. I need clarification on the difference between the boundary line and the property line. The PUD states boundary line over and over again. Along Eagle Lane, I've seen three different markers what may be the boundary line. There's the physical fence that's currently intact that would line up with the county assessor's platte that you can pull up online. There are boundary markers put in by the survey team, and then, there is his map that puts a boundary right along Eagle Lane. Eagle Lane, if you may or may not know, is currently a single-lane street that we often have to use that ditch for vehicles to pass. It's approximately 12 feet wide of actual platte top. If they were to put the fence as their platte shows, we would create safety and access concerns for the neighborhood, not only in normal transit, but in emergencies. We have a lot of older neighbors down our street, and to have an ambulance or a fire truck, sadly, not uncommon. I'd like to have language to ensure that the buffer that we constantly use is kept so not only would the city be able to upgrade the street eventually to current street width standards, but we also don't create more safety problems than we already have. Some other things to concern, to think about. Keep talking about traffic, and Southwest 29th, I agree, needs to be widened. It needs to be widened today at current levels. Add in the 2,000 residents that are actively being built. It's a problem. But forget about 29th Street. Imagine the residence of 400 units. Let's see, 600 vehicles trying to leave at 8:00 in the morning, trying to go through a single access onto 29th Street? Or the access for Buffalo Farms to the south. They've got a stub going north. Where are the residents of that neighborhood going to go? They say, oh, 29th is wider, they can go. It's like, how are they going to get there? These are problems that I think need to be addressed, need to be considered. And the simplest, correct answer is we don't do multifamily there. It doesn't make sense. Sorry. I'm concerned about the wording of not giving access to the buildings until occupancy, until the street is widened. I'd like to not see ground being broke before the street is widened, simply so we never have empty buildings to be a concern. Mr. Box had stated at our last meeting that these apartments... The screening for these apartments would be better for the residents of Eagle Lane rather than a stockade fence and single-family homes. That's simply not true, not at all. I have nearly 600 feet of frontage with the proposed property. And I would absolutely rather have a stockade fence. rather have a stockade fence and a house, a neighbor that I can go talk to if I ever had a concern, than apartments. 400 units that, they don't have any investment in the area. They don't have any long-term concern with what happens. It's become very apparent to me that, both with what I've seen pushed in this PUD, as long as other PUDs in the immediate area that Mr. Box has represented, that he does not speak for me, at the very least. As I see it, this developer, who's not currently the owner of the property, is actively pushing to see just how far outside the lines he can push. How far will we let him go? This location has more compatibility problems with the surrounding area-
30 seconds remaining.
-than I would have expected to even be proposed, more or less, get to this point. Even the developer sees that. That can be plainly seen by the gifts that they've put forward. The only people I've found that say this is a good use of the property, stand to financially gain from it passing, is became apparent to me that the love of money is driving this forward. I have two quotes for you. "For the love of money is the root of all evil, and the only thing necessary for evil to triumph in this world is for good men to do nothing." Ask, do something. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lega. Last call for Katie Helen. Okay. That concludes everyone that we have signed up to speak. So, Mr. Box, do you want to respond to any of the items we heard?
Real briefly, the question was raised about the ambiguity as it relates to this. So what I would tell you is, go look at the PUD, specifically 9.17, specifically requires that the buildings within 100 feet of the east boundary shall be oriented so that the broadside of the building faces north and south. It's not just on the exhibit, it's contained in the MDS, which Mr. Work has a copy of. There was significant talk about the character of the area, character of the area, it's all single-family. So let's just briefly look at it. Of course, this field that exists to our west and south is zoned. It's zoned for a combination of multifamily that are senior living, single-family, but what the map that the city has doesn't show you is that the neighborhood to our east, that yes, there are acreage lots. If you look just to the east of them, it's I-2 industrial with outside storage. So the idea that we're putting the apartment in this very sleepy rural area, simply not true. This is heavy industrial, right on the other side of these neighbors. This isn't rural. In fact, on the comprehensive plan, it's urban low intensity. The question was asked, that the only people seeming to support this development are the ones that stand to make financial gain. I would simply point you to your staff report. Staff has no financial interest in this project, and what they tell you is that it is compatible with the comprehensive plan, and that's why they recommend approval of it. As I said last time, standard R4 density is 34 dwelling units per acre. The idea that we're pushing the envelope to see what we can get away with, simply not true. What we ask for in this PUD is 16 units an acre, significantly less than what the bulk standard R4 zoning would allow. We do think that it's a better scenario to have a 20-foot buffer with an 8-foot masonry wall around all sides of the development, except for, of course, to the north. Mr. Work indicated that there was, it was confusion regarding the access to Eagle Lane. The PUD specifically prohibits access to Eagle Lane. The words of the document, as we all know and hear who show up every other week, that's what governs, not the site plan. Why my staff did not send this to your staff, I don't know, but the neighbors had it. We looked at the emails while we were sitting here. My, my staff sent it to the neighbors. We were back and forth, and Mr. Work didn't involve until very last minute before the last hearing, but the neighbors had this, whether or not Oklahoma City staff did or not. In terms of the spacing of the trees, I guess I would lean on Mr. Claire. Six-inch caliper seems big. We would ask for 40-foot, but we leave it in your capable hands. We're indifferent on the spacing, whatever the planning commission would desire, but a tree that large, my guess is you want them spaced a little further away.
Yeah, I mean, I had that to respond to, but since, since you asked, so what everyone needs to understand is that six-inch trees have been grown in a nursery for several years, and they've been watered every day. And when you take them from the nursery and you put them out into a new environment, they're going to need a lot of water, and if you plant them that close together, they're going to be fighting for that water. So given that those are going in fairly substantial, I would say 35 to 40 feet is a more appropriate spacing for a tree of that size when it's planted at that size.
Well, I'll just chime in, that it is also written into the PUD that a specific plan is required. So, again, on the site plan, that is, you have obviously drawn the site plan, it just isn't part of the packet, but that doesn't worry me because I understand how this process works, but that we will see that again to ensure that those east-west orientations would stay if that were the case.
Right. I did want to say that, to respond to that regarding the, the design that wasn't sent to staff, both of you guys represented the same developer on a previous case that we actually, if you guys remember, we tied that site plan to, as a TE, with the building layout and the landscape layout. And so I am kind of disappointed we didn't get it, and I would request that it be included.
As we've been sitting here, my staff sent it to staff. Routinely, they always send it. I don't know what happened on this one. I'm sure everyone's going to be waiting for me to get to the office to have the discussion, but you have it now.
And before it went to council, it would be included.
Correct. And the neighbors have it. You have it unofficially, of course, because you've been on the email correspondence, but I apologize that the staff didn't have it. The staff did have this-
Right.
-obviously because we worked together with Public Works on it. Right. Yes, sir.
What's the density in PUD 1941?
Is that the one to the west?
Yep.
I don't know, off the top of my head. It's a combination of single-family, and then there is a multifamily component that's for seniors, but the specific density, I don't know.
Okay. And I obviously understand there's a difference between a senior living facility and a traditional apartment. I get that. I wanted our neighbors to understand that. Is staff, is it possible for us to know what PUD? Okay. And then, could we have Mr. Work come up and respond regarding the landscape buffer?
Yes, sir.
Thoughts on that? On what Commissioner Claire shared?
Well, I would certainly have to defer to Commissioner Claire's expertise on that issue. I will say, because this is an issue that is important for the residents of Shock's Western Heights neighborhood, is that it was presented, the way it was presented to them, is that they would have a solid screen of landscaping that there would, that you would not be able to see through, essentially. And so that was part of the reason for the, we understood the specification of six-inch caliper trees. So the, that was the goal, that was what we understood the developer was proposing. So that would be our objective, Commissioner.
Well, I think as you, as you read the landscape code, that landscape buffer's made up of opaque fence, landforms, grass, trees, shrubs, so there's a number of things that all come together to make up that, that screen.
But I do agree, if approved, that 9.2 should be changed to say said landscape buffer shall consist of six-inch caliper trees at 35-foot centers or 40-foot centers on the east boundary line.
Mr. Pennington, we pulled that PUD, there's no limitation on the density.
It's by acreage.
So it's 34 units an acre for 10 acres.
That's what PUD 1941 is?
Yes.
Just to clarify that, it's, it's for, the PUD has multiple acreages allowed by zoning districts, so in this PUD, no more than 15 acres shall be developed in accordance with R4.
Okay.
And then the R4 is limited to senior independent living.
Okay. So the rest of, Sarah, so the rest of the development and residential development in PUD 1941 is just traditional R1?
Well, it has-
Outside of those 15 acres?
Well, they can do up to 10 acres per C3. They can do up to 15 acres in, as the senior independent living. They can do 20 acres as R2, and then the rest of it would be R1.
30-foot lots, R1.
The R1 was amended to allow a minimum lot size of 3,000 square feet and, yes, 30-foot lot widths in the R1 section.
Yep. Okay.
So the point being, to the west, it's not a sleepy, single-family community. It's a multi-type of use with senior living, duplex, commercial, small lot residential. I mean, this is not an acreage community. This is not a rural area. It may be a field now, but you can see the plat that's shown here is residential.
I, I understand the track you're going down, and I do remember the plat we heard on this section, and I do remember they were allowed 30s there, but have agreed to do no less than 40s, because that was on their plat. Not that that makes a big difference.
Just to add one comment about 1941, because it was mentioned that the commercial, of course, is limited to the intersection of County Line and 29th Street as appropriate.
A couple of things that I heard that I wanted to maybe ask Barry if, if you would come up, since we haven't heard from you today, but Mr. Cofed asked, he wanted clarification on aquifer protection. So if you could, one, talk a little bit about detention and Oklahoma City drainage ordinances and what they do to protect the aquifer. And then, two, Mr. Lega asked about clarification on basically the boundary or the right-of-way of Eagle Lane, and if you can tell us, if you know if Eagle Lane is a Oklahoma City street, and if you know the right-of-way width.
Right. Berry Lodge, Public Works. As far as the first part of it, I will qualify just a little bit. I'm not an expert groundwater hydrologist as far as protection of the aquifer is concerned. However, the, you all are probably aware that the updated revised city drainage ordinance was approved by city council two, three weeks ago at their meeting. That ordinance will be effective on January the 1st of 2025, and it will be applicable to any project that has not received approval prior to January 1st.
And that's building permit approval, correct?
That's going to be any, the site plan approval, building plan approval, their onsite drainage approval, it would apply to the improvements of the roadway, of the entire project. Based on the schedule that has been discussed with, with us for the construction, this project will fall under the requirements of the updated drainage ordinance. That updated drainage ordinance will require stormwater detention for this site, and so that part of it will be protected and will be required by, by the new ordinance. As far as the Eagle Lane, I have not looked at that. Based on what I've seen on the, on the aerials, I think that, it's my assumption at this point, I could be wrong, that that is a, is a private street maintained and owned by the property owners and not the City of Oklahoma City. If I'm, if I'm not, if I'm misstating on that, I stand corrected because I haven't researched it. As far as the, as far as the property boundary, that would be established by the legal restriction of that property and a, a property boundary survey that would set that. And a lot of times, we'll look at fences and say, oh, the fence is here, that's where that property line goes, and, and that's not going to be the case. So wherever that happens to fall, and again, that's something that I don't have any detail on, and, and the applicant hasn't, at this point, done a detailed boundary or a topographic survey of that property to set that, but that would be what determines where that property line, property boundary. I think one of his comments was, what's the difference between the boundary and the property line? They're one and the same. It's, it's just interchangeable terms for, for that same line.
What I was trying to get is, if, if we knew that there was right, you know, an established right-of-way there, then we could, you know, have an idea of how far the right-of-way slash property line was off that, but it sounds to me like it's a private street. It's likely that it's where the fence is, but, but we can't go by the exhibit?
It's, it's a public street. I, I looked, it's got a green street sign.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Well, I mean, if it is, we'd have to look and see how it's platted. Again, I, I stand corrected on that, I hadn't researched that, see what it was. And if, if it's in that, in a platted area of that development, then it, that would determine what that right-of-way is.
Okay. Thank you. What else, commissioners?
Chairman, commissioners, I just want to clarify about the aquifer as well, is this development, there is sanitary sewer on the south side that they'll be connecting to, and there is water line along 29th Street that they'll be connecting to as well, so there will be no septic.
Thank you.
I have, I'm not sure who to address this question to. We talked about drainage, we've talked about aquifer a little bit, the, there is this, what bothers me is this, obviously, this is a beautiful community. You have a unique, wonderful home, you know, neighborhood that is a classic example of, you didn't move to the city, the city moved to you, and, and that's really difficult for us, because we're looking at a more of a macro scale here, and we're looking at a half-mile away, major employment bases, and, and that's hard to resolve with character immediately adjacent, you know, with, with one, you know, with masonry walls and landscape buffers, and these things help, but we, we see a lot of, these are difficult, very difficult decisions to make. But thing, cut to the chase, is I heard comments in last week about when, about flooding Eagle Lane, and when our pond, the neighborhood Eagle Lane Pond, overflows, it goes to the west, or it goes, it goes to the east. There is an outlet to the east to Southwest 29th Street. And I know I shouldn't be addressing the, the gallery here, but the, and so that, I can see in the, the contour map in front of us that water will go out, there's an outlet It appears that the drainage path, the natural drainage pattern of the land in this area is sending water from this, you know, the application to rezone the land, that that water is going to the east. I'm zoomed in on Eagle Lane, I'm looking at the GPS, and I'm seeing a culvert that goes under the, under Eagle Lane, and, and what I want to know is, does the water go from west to east, or does it go east to west? Who's higher in this, on this site?
Natural drainage is from the west to the east. I think-
Okay.
-that when it ponds, it backs up.
It backs up.
The backwater goes into the, to the west.
But the natural-
But it's designed to go under 29th Street.
Okay. Well, not, not at 29th, but under Eagle Lane.
Under Eagle Lane, and then out, the pond, under 29th.
Yeah, and then it, then there's an outlet.
Yeah.
Okay. And that, that's, that's the issue that, in my mind, is a little harder to, to get around, because if that's the natural draining pattern, the natural detention, and, and I'm not sure what the drainage design for this site is, because it hasn't been done yet, but I would not feel good at night knowing that this development is going to be able to discharge water into, into that lake and, and on Eagle Lane, you know, under Eagle Lane and into this lake, just following the natural drainage patterns, which they're allowed to do with detention, and discharge it at the same rate, that, that, that concerns me a little bit.
It's going to happen regardless of how it's developed and what manner it's developed. Like, no matter what gets developed, it's going to happen. Now, at least you have a heightened ordinance under the city's regulations to follow.
David, do you not agree that the road widening, if approved, with the TE requiring it, would address the drainage under 29th, because the entire road in front of-
Correct.
-their addition is going to be widened where that pond drains north of 29th? They cannot just leave it as is. When they're moving utilities, widening to four lanes, they will have to provide additional drainage, which, we spoke about this last meeting, would also take care of the backwater ponding in that area.
I assume that's why Public Works inserted the language, "All design and construction shall be in accordance with the requirements of Public Works Department and all applicable statutes." and all applicable City of Oklahoma City standards and specifications."
And yes, they would be required to improve the structure that it will carry the water under 29th Street.
And while that is true, the dam for this pond is a good 200 feet south of 29th Street. So the elevation of that dam is not changing unless, because they probably own it, the neighborhood.
Right.
So there's a whole lot of drainage issues that are here.
Usually the drainage limitations and the requirement for detaining and retaining water are all caused, agree with me if you would or not, Barry, but they're all caused because a road hasn't been upgraded in a very long time, and the drainage that goes underneath that road is undersized for all of the impervious areas that have been increased in that area. So when a road widening does come through, that has to be addressed.
Yeah, that will have to be addressed, and that's part of the revised drainage ordinance. That particular part of it didn't really change a whole lot. The specific issues as far as the detention are concerned has been updated just to take care of flooding issues that we're seeing across the city under different rainfall events. And so that's going to be something that doesn't just apply to this area, but is citywide. I will point out, too, had this development come in earlier in the year and been ready to develop, they would not have been required in this location to provide detention. That's going to be a protection that comes in based on the new ordinance that was passed.
Mr. Legay, if you want to add a clarification on drainage, please come to the mic.
I keep hearing, sorry, I keep hearing just volume, volume, volume. A big concern is pollutants. With multifamily housing, there are significantly more vehicles. The higher possibility for coolant, oil, antifreeze, et cetera, being into our pond. Even if, and it's a big if, the levels don't cause a problem. The pollutants will cause a problem for the wildlife, the ducks, the geese, the fish. And I rely on that pond to teach my daughter a lot of stuff.
All right. Thank you. All right.
I think just a little bit about the land use itself and some of the comments that we've heard. But against the comprehensive plan that we've seen and we try to follow, and the variety of housing that we're going to see in this area, I can see that where apartments will work in this location. And also the fact that it's so close to the employment areas. So for the land use for those two points, I can see the apartment complex being here. It's hard to envision when you don't have all that development, but that all of that development's been approved in this coming.
No, I get that. That's why I was trying to verbalize it. And I believe in looking at the development plan and what's happened on the southwest 29th and what we've heard, that the water would be going to southwest 29th, not Eagle Lane on that. But I don't have anything to guarantee that either.
To add a little bit, I did a lot of thinking after the last meeting, and all I got to go by is experience. And I spent 17 years at a fire station, and I was the first-in, first-arrival engine on 16 apartment complexes in my district. And so I had them, you know, I have them memorized where they're at, where we'll catch the first plug at, how we would enter, where we'd bring backup units. I know these apartments intimately because I had to be preparing for the worst-case scenario on all 16 apartment complexes. So I went back thinking about each and every one of them. And I heard it several times in the last meeting, and for the future, we need to think about this. I started going through all 16 of these complexes that I have burned into my memory. And over half of them are not on arterial corners. So that thought process that keeps coming up regarding that in and of itself, being at a halfway of a mile section, I can give you names of complexes all over the area that aren't on corners. Corners are designed to be more commercial, in my opinion, not multifamily. So I don't have that as a stumbling block for me regarding this case or any others that come along that aren't on intersections.
All right. Anything else?
I want to jump in, talk about, and you guys help me out if I'm following this along right. We have one TE that David's requesting. And I agree with, that it says that access should be required along the south PUD boundary in a manner that meets fire department requirements. Stopping there, I spoke with Mr. Mike Wilson, and he's not going to allow anything to happen there if the Buffalo Farms component hasn't provided their emergency access. They will have to agree with those other developers, and he won't allow it. Told me it's not a problem to worry about. Fire's going to handle that. I've had that commitment. I don't believe, I do want to modify if we, sorry. I do want to modify the screening regulations. I'm prepared with that. We have the TE for the streets. I believe the access on the Eagle Lane is handled correctly in 9.8. I believe 9.2 regarding landscape regulations does need modified with the tree spacing. And I have that written down. Other than that, I can't think of anything else. And I want to say, with what all I'm saying to the neighbors, I told you this last time, and I'm going to repeat it again. This is a council issue. I believe that, I believe that every zoning case that has property for sale, that people come in and they have the right, they have the entitlement to try to change zoning, that we do the best we can to make it a best product as we can and send it to council. And that's where you guys need to contact your councilperson. I don't know how this vote's going to go. I'm only one vote. I'm ready to make a motion unless there's any other discussion.
Do we have a good handle on all the TEs?
Do you mind if I read what I think? So TE 1 put a period at the end of requirements, deleting everything after that. TE 2, the language I handed out. TE 3, require the masonry wall to also be on the south and west. TE 4, require the trees within the buffer to be on 40-foot centers.
Just a clarification, you said to require the masonry wall also on the south and the west. So you're saying it already is in there for the east?
It's already in there for the east. And that was a, that was an item we said last time.
That's an important item to me, and I actually have it ready to read the way I would like to hear it. If you guys want to hear it. 9.4 screening regulations, no less than an eight-foot-high wall shall be required along the east, west, and south boundary of this parcel. Said wall shall be constructed entirely of masonry block on a continuous footing, no less than a six-foot and no greater than an eight-foot-high wrought iron fence shall be required along the northern boundary line of this PUD. You good with that?
Perfect. Yep.
What about, and tree spacing?
Okay, the tree spacing, I had, the last sentence on 9.2, said landscape buffer shall consist of six-inch caliper trees at 35-foot centers.
Would say maximum 40 foot.
Maximum of 40-foot centers to provide additional screening.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just suggest that it seems to me that there should be appropriately a TE that address this switching out of the conceptual plan from the one that is dated September 3rd, 2024, to this new one that is dated September 25, 2024, so that that is clear and part of your record.
Is there anything in the MDS or in the PUD that makes the conceptual plan a legal requirement? That was the original question I was asking Kelly earlier. If it's a conceptual plan, then it doesn't matter. What matters is the language in the MDS and in the PUD. And that's why I asked the question I did, Kelly, earlier, about what language is making the conceptual plan controlling?
9.17.
9.17. Specific plans shall be required. The buildings within 100 feet of these boundary lines shall be oriented so the broadside of the buildings face north and south.
So I'm not understanding what you're saying that's different than the fact that we're going to see this entire conceptual plan again when they come, this whole, the actual plan when they come back.
There is a requirement when you submit an application for a PUD that you have to also submit a conceptual plan. The one that has been submitted has now been replaced by one dated September 25, I'm told, by Mr. Box tonight. So it's like that reference should be made in the minutes of this meeting, that you're accepting the September 25 conceptual plan to replace the one that was submitted with the application. That's all.
That's why I was like, I'm trying to follow. I'm trying to make sure I'm not missing something.
They've clearly drawn the plan, so prior to going to council, they should submit the plan. That is consistent with what the TEs and language agreed here, just for clarity.
Right.
It has been submitted. As we've all been gathered here, it's been submitted.
My suggestion, that should be reflected in your minutes that you're making of this meeting and in the motion.
But again, what's even more important to me was that I understood what Kelly, what the intent was, that we made sure that that's reflected in the language. Like, that has been my biggest thing, is just making sure that whatever it is that you're saying that is memorialized in this conceptual plan that you're desiring, the language reflects exactly that, too, has always been my concern. So I just want to be clear about that.
We could just say Exhibit B shall be required, well, this is the current version. We could change it again just to indicate where additional masonry wall is required. My staff is watching this meeting. I guarantee, the next time we get another exhibit, the first email is going to be to Thad and Sarah.
Okay. I'll drop it.
I believe that all of the changes that we're ready to make, other than the layout to the conceptual plan, the general building layout are all being handled in the PUD.
Yes. The regulations that would be required to be adhered to at a building permit are adequately in the MDS.
We have the chance, again, to agree or not agree with that at the specific plan.
Correct.
Okay.
Pretty pictures don't matter, but we have already swapped it out.
For clarification purposes, that conceptual plan that is reflected in that exhibit is dated September 25, 2024, on the face of the drawing. So I understand from Mr. Box's comments that has been submitted and will replace the plan that was previously submitted, which was September 3rd. I think the record just needs to adequately reflect that.
All right. It will.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Meek?
Okay. With that said, I'm ready to recommend approval of PUD 2029 with the TEs. TE number one being, access shall be required along the south PUD boundary in a manner that meets fire department requirements. TE number two, the fence and screening changes. Need to read them again. Okay. 9.4 screening regulations, no less than an eight-foot-high wall shall be required along the east, west, and south boundary of this parcel. Said wall shall be constructed entirely of masonry on a continuous footing, no less than a six-foot and no greater than an eight-foot-high wrought iron fence shall be required along the northern boundary line of this PUD. That's TE number two. TE number three is the one that's provided by Mr. Box to everybody, the additional TE for PUD 2029. Developers shall be required to pay for and install the widening of southwest 29th County Line Road, east tie into the existing four-lane section, and installation of signalization at the intersection of southwest 29th Street and County Line Road prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any structure on site. The southwest 29th Street widening shall be to a four-lane section and shall include dedicated left-turn lanes on all four approaches at the intersection of southwest 29th and County Line Road. All design and construction shall be in accordance with the requirements of the Public Works Department and all applicable City of Oklahoma City standards and specifications. These special conditions shall not be administratively amended. And then we have TE number four, which is a change to 9.2 landscape regulations. And we will be changing the last sentence to say, said landscape buffer shall consist of six-inch caliper trees on no less than 40-foot spacings.
Maximum 40 foot.
Maximum, sorry, yes, maximum 40-foot spacings. Did I miss anything? Okay.
All right. So that was a motion? So we have a motion from Commissioner Meek to recommend to city council, PUD 2029, subject to the technical evaluations, is read in the record. Just waiting on a second. Submit second by Commissioner Newman. Please cast your votes. And that item passes. All right, we are going back to item seven.
Item seven is a resolution of the Planning Commission finding that the proposed amendments to the Northeast Renaissance Redevelopment Project Plan 2019 are in conformance with the city's comprehensive plan and recommending approval of the amended and restated Northeast Renaissance Redevelopment Project Plan 2024.
Good afternoon. Joanna McSpadden with the Finance Department. Apologies for my tardiness. We're going to get some slides pulled up, and I just want to show you the map of the changes that we're proposing. So this is the existing, is this the project plan? Is this the actual project plan document that we're looking at? Or is this the slideshow? Okay. Is there another?
I can't see anything in the packet anyway. I'm just going to watch it. I'm not even going to look on this.
So we're proposing an amendment to the Northeast Renaissance, yeah, it should be that. The Northeast Renaissance Project Plan. The first slide, the next slide here is going to show you a map of the existing project plan as it stands today. Kind of that center line that you're looking at is 23rd Street. It goes north to about 44th and then south into, I think, Fourth Street is kind of that lower area. The outlined yellow is the main bulk of the project area. The red is the current active TIF, only, I'm sorry. It's one of two active TIF districts in the area. The pink, up in the top-left corner, TIF 15, that's the homeland site, just to kind of orient yourselves. The next slide shows what we're proposing to add. We're proposing to add two new increment districts that are non-contiguous. On the, the orange is going to be a site along Martin Luther King and 63rd, just right there at the corner of the Adventure District. And then the one on the right is actually pretty far out east in Ward 7. It's the site of Filmmakers Ranch. So any of you are familiar with, I believe, the school, I don't have it written down. It used to be a school, and they've taken it over, turned it into a movie studio. So we're proposing to add these two sites as separate increment districts to the TIF plan. And for you all today, we would like you to consider this in conformance with the master comp plan. And I looked up the assignments for those areas. You guys are much more familiar with it, but I'm going to tell you what they are. So TIF D, the Interacts, which this is what that is, they're proposing adventure uses, hotel restaurants, those types of things that are in conformance with what you see in the Adventure District now. The purple site, TIF E, is rural medium intensity. And what I found on that is commercial that does not negatively impact residents. I can tell you that currently the plan for Filmmakers Ranch is to expand their staff and some things like that. And so we would present this to you for consideration. I'm happy to answer questions. These projects would be coming back through all of the appropriate bodies for approval. So today, it's really just your recommendation for adding these areas to the TIF project plan.
Okay. Any questions?
I have a few. Thank you for being here. Number one question, on increment District D, have you met with the Millwood School District? And what are their thoughts on this?
So unfortunately, we had planned to have our TIF review committee today, and I would have had a perfect answer for you. We had to cancel that. So you all are actually our first stop. We have met with Millwood. Verbally, they have agreed with this. We actually had a larger site that we were looking at first, and they were a little uncomfortable with coming in with a larger. We were actually looking at a larger site for the Adventure District. I don't know if you recall, we did a community meeting and kind of met about that. We sort of pared it down to this one. And they, at least verbally with Kenny Soodle, had said that they were comfortable. had, had said that they were, they were comfortable with this site. I can't, I don't, I, we didn't have our meeting today, so I can't absolutely tell you yes or no.
So we're recommending this to council now?
You're recommending it as in conformance with the comp plan, it still has to go to the TIF review committee, and they will have to weigh in on their recommendation too. I hope that it would happen before the meeting, but we had to cancel that one.
Okay, because that's my, that's my primary concern. Then I just saw a phrase that I wanted to make sure that I completely understood the meaning of it, and that is destination, retail, and entertainment. Why, why did you say, why did you use the word destination? What makes that different than if just saying retail and entertainment?
I, I think that destination retail brings people into that area intentionally to go to particular sites, and I think that we probably would like to encourage destination retail to the Adventure District specifically, and that's, I, I think you're reading from one of the objectives that was added. So that was, that was the idea, is we're kind of capturing that whole Adventure District area and sort of trying to help incentivize developments that would encourage.
So is it like a Bass Pro, is that what you mean by that? Is that considered destination retail?
I mean, I guess it would be considered destination retail, that's not what this would be, this is.
No, I was just trying to understand what that, like, I'm trying to get a visual for what that means, like, so it means, it just means we're going to have retail? Okay.
Something that people would go a long distance just to go there.
Just for that.
Not, not at McDonald's.
This is more destination.
Also because it's, I mean, that site's not set to serve, it's not save, serving immediate other uses or supplementing other developments, it's off-the-highway destination, right? That's how I'd see it.
Walmart would not fit in probably to destination retail if we were thinking of something that doesn't fit that, I think that it's the, it's, you were intending to go to this area for this specific thing, because it maybe doesn't exist other, in other places.
But that will play into the TIF review committee's analysis when they're determining how to distribute the funds from the TIF, right?
Yeah, our hope was, for that Adventure District area, was to really kind of encourage destination travel to that area, bring people over there, and encourage new development.
Okay. So, okay, well, I mean, I'm, I'm, in general, again, I'm, I'm in support, I just want to make sure that the school district is taken care of and.
Yeah, they will, they will be a part of the TIF review committee, and we will have that recommendation once we're able to reschedule that meeting.
Okay.
I believe there's already a pickleball.
Volleyball.
Pickleball. Volleyball, yeah, like outdoor recreation.
Being built.
Being built on this site, so.
Yeah, they're working on it.
Okay.
The plan is to have a master development with more retail, restaurants, those types of things, and so that's, that's where the TIF would come into play.
Cool. I'm in support, I, I don't think I have any other questions.
Anyone else?
Can I ask about the purple?
Sure.
Just on, on, you explained the colors, and I'm sorry if I missed.
That's okay.
Quite what that.
Yeah. It's just an indication that it's a separate TIF district, when we activate those, the TIF district, set budget, they're sort of, they're standalone.
Okay. And then, in that zone, that's the Filmmakers Ranch. Not all owned by one, this is multiple, comprised of multiple parcels, is it not?
I believe, right, I think that it's, it's, I want to say it's a family, I want to say they have the last, same last name, but I think their, their plan is to.
Typically spent on, so.
Right.
Okay.
Infrastructure and construction, I mean, we're, we would incentivize the development as well. We can use the TIF funds to incentivize the development as well.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just kind of curious. They don't have water out there, I, I don't believe, would that be like bringing city water and sewer to these sites, would that be part of something that you'd spend TIF funds on?
If they had to, if they were to expand their use to that degree, they, that would have to be a project that they would bring forward, yeah. I don't, I don't know exactly what their project is yet, and so I think once we, we have that information, we would be able to, to share a little bit more, but right now, just drawing them into the TIF to make it eligible to receive an application for something like that would be.
Whatever it is, yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of this resolution.
Motion to approve the resolution from Commissioner Pennington. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers, please cast your votes. That item's approved.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I think that brings us to the end of our items to be heard. Put us in line for additional items. We have an update on any Planning Commission committees?
The ADU Task Force did have another meeting.
You guys have hats? Need them.
We do. We, we did meet and are exploring options still. It did come to our attention that I will not be present at the October 24th meeting of the Planning Commission, and so while I was perfectly fine with the ADU ordinance being heard on the 24th, my colleagues were not fine with that. So I think at this moment, our, our goal is to, without some further discussion, I know that, that Commissioner Powers sent an email to us today with some specific questions and recommendations, but I think we'd like to see the ordinance at this moment, at least, go on the November, November, is it the 14th?
14th, and we just have one in November?
So that's, that's the thought right now. I think, I'll just, I'll just say this, I, I don't think that we are at a place where the recommendation from the task force will be unanimous, I don't think that will be true. And I think that's perfectly fine. I think what we were wanting to do was get really good public input, hear more detailed information from staff, and be able to come back to the Planning Commission and give additional information about that, and I think we'll be well-equipped to do that. These are complex, complex issues, and I think it would be good for us as the, the task force to spend some time with our fellow commissioners that were not on the task force, to share sort of our concerns, what we found, so that we can go in more informed. I appreciate everyone's effort on the, the task force, it's not been an easy thing, especially, you know, Commissioner Noble, I think he has a thousand jobs on the Planning Commission at this current moment, but I think we're going to keep on, keep on talking, and, and hopefully, we will bring something back on November 14th, not the 7th, 14th.
You said, you mentioned an opportunity to kind of brief the, the rest of the commission that wasn't on this, do we think that that's a study session?
Not necessarily, I, I don't think so, but I think maybe if we were just to make an effort to, to speak with each other about it. Obviously, I mean, again, I, I would expect that there will be plenty of public comment, I, my goal and hope was, because I'm just the optimist that I am, was that we were going to meet with neighbors and constituents, and we were going to come back with something and have a nice kumbaya moment of us all together, my dreams will not come true, but, but I do think we will be well-informed and will have a better product than the one that we originally received, so, there's that. I don't know if anybody else on the task force has other comments.
I think you, that was a good summary, and, and I haven't had a chance to fully digest your email, Commissioner Powers, but we'll definitely circle back and, and appreciate that, and I think we've made, we've come a long way, and it's, it's, it's not quite there, but it's, we're much closer now. So, that's good.
Planning Commission members?
I just wanted to comment a little bit about the issue of lot split development. You know, a very long time ago, the Planning Commission implemented a protection in West Nichols Hills. At, at one time, it was a, a section of the city that had huge lots and small houses, and the concern at the time was that the lots would be split, and, you know, a, a lot of little houses would proliferate. And so we put in place a requirement that lots be developed in a, in a manner that is relatively consistent with the lots around them in that area. And I think, I think it was like 75%, so that it would not end up in a bunch of lot splits and a lot of little tiny homes in this area. That was very predominantly large lots, small homes. Well, that's not the way that worked out, and now there are large houses on large lots.
Multiple lots, yeah.
But, and, and most of them are on single lots, I mean, they, they were huge lots to start with, but the, the idea of keeping the lot sizes relatively consistent with adjoining properties is something that led its way into our thinking in a more generalized manner, and, and that's something that we often do when we're looking at plats next to plats, and wanting to keep at least the ones that are adjoining consistent and so on. So the idea of, of, yes, that, you know, one of the questions that was put to me was, well, how come this is, hasn't been happening up till now? I don't have an answer for that, it's just market-driven, you know? At, at this point, there are neighborhoods that are so well-stabilized, and their property values are, are high enough, and they're just pleasant enough places people want to live, especially close in, you know, there aren't that many suburban-style, you know, neighborhoods that are close in, that it just, you know, it's just market-driven, and now it is, it is in a place where, you know, there are lots of neighbors, neighborhoods where you could go in, scrape a lot, and, you know, split it and build two homes, each of which would be more expensive than what was there previously. So whether that's something that we feel the need, again, as I said before, to get involved in, or think about, you know, how commonplace it's going to become, whether we have an investment, or whether our citizenry has a significant interest in maintaining, because it, it, there's no question that it changes the character of the neighborhood, are you going to do is drive around West Nichols Hills and you can see for yourself how much it's changed, whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, or something we want to stay out of, or something we want to get involved in, I just wanted to be sure that we're thinking about it.
I want to know, I want to know how the math worked on that, because I couldn't, I couldn't really wrap my mind around how the math worked, that that was going to be able to still stay within the R1 base zone.
Sure. And I, that's when I subbed out to the hall, I believe I've explained exactly what I feel like I should have come up and explained earlier to. So staff's guidance on lot split is in the subdivision regulations, it's part of subdivision of land. Staff is, they process hundreds of, due approvals per year, and we are, we're allowed to split any parcel or parent lot two times to create up to three lots, as long as it meets the zoning regulation. So in this case, they had 100-foot of frontage on one street, and they're proposing to split the lot so that you'd have 80-foot on the southern lot, and then 60-foot on the top. So they're meeting the 6,000-square-foot minimum lot size, and they're meeting the 50-foot of frontage required in the R1 district. When those, when, when that's true, they, they can be split, now we do send it to the Utilities Department for review. Utilities returned a condition that each lot would have to provide reciprocal easements, one for water and one for sewer. So with that, staff approved the lot split. Now, they have to be able to meet the R1 standards. And what I've explained to the neighbors was that when the spud came to us, and we started really digging in and reviewing it, we couldn't figure out or explain to you why the spud was needed, because they were meeting the minimum lot size for R1, and they were showing all R1 setbacks. So.
When you go vertical, you know, you can get the square footage out of it to, you know, meet the 50% lot coverage.
Yeah, I think maybe I was just trying to figure out the third split, or the second split to make the third lot.
There's not, that will not be possible here, they don't have enough, in this case, they don't have enough land, but because of the size of the lot in the corner, they're able to get both the lot size and the lot frontage they need. I'm not sure that they can meet the, the lot coverage, they would have to meet the 50% maximum lot coverage, and of course, all the setbacks, and the height limitations of the R1 district in order to actually develop the lot.
Which was doable, go vertical.
It's doable, but again, going vertical is inconsistent with the character, which was the primary point of the people who were here.
Correct, and.
And I appreciate that point, but then I would recommend that those people form a, a neighborhood committee and introduce standards, and get, if they think they speak for everyone in the neighborhood, get everyone to agree to it, and introduce those standards that are enforceable, because.
Otherwise, right.
If that's not, if someone can do an R1 lot split and meet all the regulations for R1, it's still R1, I mean, what can we do about it?
Well, and anyone in that zone R1 has two and a half stories and 35 feet, that's the maximum, that's the maximum building height, so. There's not, there is not a reason for us to deny an application for a lot split in that, in that case.
So I, yeah, I don't have an issue with that, I understand the neighborhood character point, it's a very valid point, but there's, like, they don't have that protection in place right now, other than.
Well, the comp plan offers them that protection, we talk about maintaining the, the character of these neighborhoods, so.
Yeah, well, and if it's a spud that comes to us, we can do that, but if they don't come back with a spud, I don't see how we can do anything else to just eliminate the rest of it, so that, maybe that's why they should consider whether, well, they can't force the person that owns the land to do a spud either, but if they did a spud, at least we could do things like fencing and landscape buffers and stuff like that, but otherwise, it's just straight R1, I mean, anyone can build a two, two and a half-story R1 house, and as a city grows and densifies, you can't build one-story ranch homes on huge lots forever, you have to go a little bit higher and a little closer together, that just happens, and.
I think we've seen that all over.
And I, and I, so I'm not saying it, it, it's appropriate everywhere, but I'm saying that's the way it works, and I don't know what, I don't feel that it's our place to try and restrict it other than through the spud process, as we normally would.
Well, and I would hope that in the code update, we're thinking through, when someone gets a lot split, is it possible for there to be some more review of the character? Again, I feel for the people who are like, now I'm going to have this house, looking over my, 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 looking over my fence, I get that, I, I understand, it happened to me specifically, when they moved to a garage apartment closer to my backyard than it was previously, and, so I understand that. But my bigger concern, to piggyback off of this, was this comment that was made about, well, we've done, we have enough density and we just can't have anymore, and I think that our city needs to really do a better job educating the public about the benefits of having more people living in our city, and safe, character-respecting ways in which we can do that. I think if we don't get ahead of where the public sentiment is, we're going to spend every single Planning Commission meeting, opposing every single opportunity for more people to have great places to live. Of course, people want to move to places where people already are, there's a reason why it's a great place to live, so more people want to live there. We shouldn't deny that, we should be trying to find a way to make those, make the interests compatible. And here I am on my Pollyanna, we can all find a way forward stuff, so I'll stop, Commissioner.
I was thinking, as we were hearing the, the, totally separate subject, the discussion about the Northeast Renaissance Plan Amendment, about the first time that you and I went and met with the people about the, the film ranch thing, you know, it's like, it seems like 100 years ago now, and we thought they were crazy.
I did.
Okay, you're going to take this elementary school out in the middle of nowhere, and you're going to turn it into a movie studio, sounds good.
Good luck with that.
Sounds good, good luck with that.
Could be something, so that's good.
It has been, it's been, it's been amazing.
I worked on that project, that's why I was interested in it, and when I found out, not only is it an elementary school turning into a film studio, but it has no water, or no sewer, I was.
They went into all that with their eyes wide open, I will say.
I know, I know.
I think that was the, the time that I missed my opportunity to become a billionaire, they said if you own, if you can buy a warehouse anywhere in the United States, now that, you know, everybody, every, every channel is doing its own content and all that kind of stuff, there aren't enough movie studios, I mean, there's just not enough warehouse space to create these things, it's like, if you know where one is, you should go buy it.
All right, I'm, I'm told that we're, we're discussing things that we've already discussed, and that we need to move on, so. Commissioner Meek, any comments?
How many rules?
I'm glad that we nominated Commissioner Forge, because he has to stay on the Planning Commission while he's on that, so, yeah, welcome back. I want to thank you guys for your help on previous case that we're not supposed to discuss. But let it and others like it be a understanding that with multifamily in general, there is creative subsidized funding that these people are bringing, that more can be asked of them, that's my general statement, this is a perfect example. So whether it's compatible, I know that's a case-by-case basis, but to me, a PUD is a give and take, and I think that. a give-and-take, and I think that the take needs to be increased when things like this come into the areas like they're coming in ours. The last thing I want to say is, we also probably need to be cognizant of the way that some of the developments, like the one that's south of that one, were getting released. That's all I got. Thanks.
Commissioner Privet?
Good.
Commissioner Newman?
I'm with you.
Mr. Govine? Commissioner Pennington? Mr. La Forge? I don't have anything. Planning Department?
Just wanted to mention, you're right. Just wanted to mention that I attended an interim study at the Capitol last week. I don't remember the day it was, but we had, it was, the discussion was about zoning reform related to affordable housing. There's a lot, as you guys know nationally, a lot of conversations about affordability, not just for, you know, those that are kind of a lower to moderate income, subsidized affordable housing, but making housing affordable in general, regardless of price range, market rate, et cetera. And there were presentations by the Oklahoma Policy Institute, National Home Builder, which I can't remember, it's not D.R. Horton, I can't remember the name of, of the builder, I was trying to find it, but a couple of smaller towns in the community, the Realtors Association, a lot of discussion about the challenge that, to use the term they use, nimbyism poses to communities and various solutions, most if not all of which we are currently proposing. Accessory dwellings is one of those, but also many of the zoning reforms that we're already proposing in our, in our code update. So we'll see what happens if, if somebody wants to take that up at the legislature, and I offered that, and sure, certainly we are happy to participate. So I'll keep you informed if that grows legs. Just want to let you know that that was happening, and we're happy to see that the discussions are going on, so that's all I have.
Oh, I did have one other thing I wanted to say. I threw kind of a roundabout way. I sit on the HP Board for the Capitol Medical, and I went in that capacity to a seminar, I guess is the right way to put it, that, the acronym, the acronym for which was CAMP C-A-M-P. But it was about, about HP and how it works, and, you know, after all this time, it was, it was really well-presented, our staff's participation in bringing it here and hosting it, and, and, you know, just had the physical thing of where it was set up and all that, which is over in the library. It was really wonderfully done, and I think each of the participants, the, the presenters made a point of saying, you know, how welcoming it was to come to Oklahoma City, how easy it was to work with staff, how professional staff is here, so. And, and comment on how incredibly understaffed our city is compared to our peer cities. It's like, we just are doing so much more with so much less, so.
Thank you. Anything from the municipal councillor's office? Nope. I see no citizens to be heard. Any other business? Nope. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.